The introduction of mobile application-based, including medallion taxi, including medallion taxi cabs for hire vehicles known as FHVs, commuter vans, and paratransit vehicles. Over the last decade, the landscape has dramatically changed with the introduction of mobile application-based for hire vehicles in the city. From 2011 to 2024, for hire vehicles increased from 39,700 to approximately 108,000, putting immense pressure on our yellow taxis. App-based FHVs and the emergence of new technology has increased competition for trips in the city, leading to a decrease in the number of medallion taxi trips in the city and revenue earned by drivers. Since 2014, there has been a rapid decline in taxi medallion values from a peak of almost $1 million to a median sales price of approximately $120,000 as of September 2023. The large decline in medallion values, coupled with a decrease in total fares collected, has continued to cause severe financial hardships for many taxi medallion owners. As a result, many drivers, owners, and advocates have called on the city for help. The creation of the Taxi Medallion Owner Relief Program and the subsequent Taxi Medallion Owner Relief Program Plus provides assistance to small medallion owners struggling with debt. It helps them work with lenders in order to restructure their loans, reduce principal owed, and lower their monthly payments. As I have talked with drivers and owners, many have stated that the programs are simply not enough to address the mounting debt faced by medallion owners. To supplement these programs, the administration and the TLC Commission implemented an agreement that provided hundreds of millions of dollars in debt relief for more than 3,000 medallion owners. In addition to this, the recent COVID-19 pandemic further drove daily trips in driver revenue. Although medallions are coming out of storage, monthly data reports released by TLC indicate that the number of unique yellow taxis on the road as of July 2024 are still 24% lower than their pre-pandemic levels. More recently, on January 5, 2025, MTA launched its congestion pricing program in the city requiring that yellow taxis be charged an additional 75 cents per trip when driving in and out of the congestion relief zone, which includes all roadways south of 60th Street with minor exceptions. Under this program, taxi drivers and for-hire vehicle drivers pay additional tolls when they drive into these areas, which are passed on to customers in the form of increased fares. These have not been easy years for drivers and owners of taxi medallions. That is why we convened this hearing, to hear drivers' concerns and understand how we can address them in an effective way. Today, along with the topics discussed above, we will be delving into a wide variety of topics pertaining to the TLC, including TLC's electrification efforts, yellow cab retirement, TLC's decals for drivers in regards to cyclists, Uber's partnership with yellow cabs, insurance requirements for vehicles, and other major issues in the industry. In particular, I want to better understand the potential impact of limited personal injury protection or PIP requirements currently mandated by TLC and effects that would have on drivers who appear and to be sworn in with the administration. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next panel will be from the Taxi and Limousine Commission. Commissioner David Doe, General Counsel Cheryl Ludo, Deputy Commissioner for Operations, People and Innovation, Evan Hines. I will now administer the oath. Please raise your right hands. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before this committee and to respond honestly to council member questions? Thank you. You may begin when ready.
Good morning, Chair Brooks Powers and members of the Committee on Transportation and Infrastructure. I am David Doe, Chair and Commissioner of the New York Taxi and Limousine Commission. I'm here today with the General Counsel Cheryl Ludo and Deputy Commissioner for Operations, People and Innovation, Evan Hines. Thank you for the invitation to provide an update on the city's taxi industry and start a dialogue on a set of bills on the agenda. As the oversight topic of the hearing today is the taxi industry, following the oversight hearing back in the fall, which concentrated on for-hire vehicles and commuter vans, I'll focus my testimony on yellow cabs. In recent months, yellow taxis have reported about 3.7 million trips each month. This represents a steady increase from the previous post-pandemic months. In fact, the 3.8 million trips completed in October 2024 were the highest since early 2020. Taxi trips overall are at about 50% to 55% of pre-pandemic levels. Even before 2020, taxi trips were on the decline, with 11 to 13 million trips completed each month in 2015 and 6 to 8 million completed in each month in 2019. So while the longer trend in taxi trips has been one of significant decline, there are hopeful signs in the recent trip increases. Similar positive trends are evident in other taxi-related data, including the numbers of drivers and vehicles on the road each month. Working drivers, working vehicles, and vehicles not in storage have all been on a consistent rise, all hitting post-pandemic highs in recent months. For example, 9,768 taxis completed a trip in December of 2024, which is the highest number of active taxis since the 11,315 that completed a trip in March of 2020. Industry revenue is also on the rise, with hourly and monthly gross revenues for taxi drivers even exceeding 2019 levels thanks to the taxi fare increases TLC adopted in 2022. Industry fare box revenue is now consistently at about $3 million per day, up over 40% from the fare increase. In sum, while there are fewer trips than in 2019, there are also fewer drivers and vehicles, and each trip has more revenue potential. So on average, those who are working are earning more than they did in 2019. While still too far too early to make an assessment on the impact of congestion pricing on the taxi industry, the early data is hopeful. With taxi trips up about 10% in the first week, it was in effect compared to the same week in 2024, which is consistent with the general upward trend of taxi trips before congestion pricing went into effect. As we continue to monitor the data, we may see that some people are choosing to take taxis rather than their personal vehicles in the central business district. Reduced congestion allows taxis to complete more trips in shorter times. The general increase in taxi trips is strong enough to overcome the impact of the small additional surcharge or most likely some combination of these factors. TLC will continue to analyze the impact of congestion pricing on the taxi industry and all of our licensed industries as more data continues to accumulate. And we will continue to show that data and all the data that I've mentioned today on the TLC Factbook so that the public can monitor the industry trends and impacts for themselves. Perhaps the most impactful recent issue for the taxi industry has been wheelchair accessibility. As ordered by the Federal District Court, TLC adopted rules requiring all new taxis be wheelchair accessible. This has a major impact on the finances of both the taxi industry and the TLC's Taxi Improvement Fund, which uses a dollar passenger surcharge to subsidize accessible vehicle conversions and accessibility programs. As more taxis become wheelchair accessible, which is of course a good thing, TLC has to make difficult decisions about how to allocate limited TIF funds to most more efficiently and effectively to improve wheelchair accessible vehicle service and make sure we meet the court-imposed deadlines for 50% of the taxi fleet to be accessible. We will continue to work with stakeholders from the taxi industry and the disability community to determine how we can increase accessibility while ensuring the continued economic viability of the industry.
You operating safely. Thank you, Chair, for the opportunity. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner, for your testimony. I'm going to start with the medallion values. In a previous 2023 hearing with the TLC, TLC stated that the current medallion value as of October 13, 2023 was transacting at $200,000. Resale on defaulted medallion sold for about $170,000. What is the current value of the medallion?
So the TLC does not keep track of medallion values, but we keep track of transfers of medallions in the private marketplace. I think when in 2023 we last had the discussion, I gave a range, and that current range is between 90,000 and 200,000, consistent with what you just said, council member.
Do you have an idea of what the current resale on a defaulted medallion is?
So on average, it's about 130. So from the MRP-plus program, I think that's what the question is. It was between 135,000 on average and as high as 170,000, depending on what type of medallion, or excuse me, depending on whose medallion it is, what lender is providing financing for that medallion or not, cash versus a bank-backed medallion.
How many medallions have been exchanged in fiscal year '24? And how was that number compared in previous years?
Yeah, so what is important to know is that most of our data is on our website. We publish that data on a monthly basis, and we show that transfer. Anywhere from 20 on up per month, but Cheryl can provide a little bit more about how many medallions have been transferred over the last year or so.
I don't have that right in front of me, but it's true. Everything is on our website, and it's very transparent.
So that means you guys can look it up while we're here.
We can look that up.
Thank you.
I think we have it.
Okay. Does the TLC forecast medallion values? I guess you said, I know you don't really track them, but do you forecast them at least?
We do not forecast, no.
So, council member, again, you know, based on the sensitivities around the medallion crisis about six years ago, you know, TLC does not have, in its practice, to forecast or say what medallion values should be. Really, our job has been to support a healthy stability of the overall market, and that's why we introduced the MRP-plus and the MRP programs that provide a debt relief to a variety of owners of medallions. Okay, so over, so just to go back to your question on transfers. In calendar year 2023, there were 777 transfers of medallions, and in calendar year '24, there was 1,003.
Thank you for that. How does TLC work to ensure that medallion values increase? Does TLC have any direct role in this?
Yeah, again, we, that is a place for the private market. We don't own medallions. We don't look at medallion values, but we provide a certain sustainability with overall the market. We evaluate the market, look at meter rates, see if they are consistent with the current market. But in terms of medallion values themselves, the TLC does not play a particular part in that.
Thank you. Going into the Taxi Medallion Owner Relief Program, the TLC Owner Driver Resource Center assists in the administration of the Taxi Medallion Owner Relief Program, also known as MRP, and the Loan Guarantee Program, or MRP-plus. These programs both provide debt relief for eligible medallion owners. Since its inception, how much money has been provided to owners in the MRP and MRP-plus programs? And can you give us a breakdown of the funding for each program?
So, we are incredibly proud of the MRP and MRP-plus program. It has done wonders to change many driver and owner's lives. Over the last two and a half years, the program in total has provided over $471 million of debt relief for our drivers and our owners of medallions who own six or less medallions. That broken down is about 2,367 medallions that were supported through this program and over 2,034 medallion owners. There was about $65.7 million of city grant funding that were provided to incentivize participation in this program. And then there is a $50 million reserve fund to support the overall ongoing costs of the program.
How much money has been provided to yellow car owners in 2024? And how does that compare to previous years?
Yellow car owners for which program, council member?
For the same taxi medallion owner relief program.
Okay, so for MRP, it was 71 million. For MRP-plus, it was 400 million.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Sure. MRP, 71 million. MRP-plus is 400 million. And the average amount of debt relief was about $200,000.
How much staffing has TLC dedicated to assisting yellow car owners through the MRP and MRP-plus programs?
So we have a Owner Driver Resource Center that works with a variety of different nonprofits, including NILAG, which is a legal provider to support the ODRC. There are four staff members that are dedicated to the ODRC, plus an assistant commissioner. And within that program, we also provide partnerships with well-being organizations, including New York City Health and Hospitals. We provide financial literacy help and then also legal help as part of the program. And so, within the program, there's three to four, actually four, plus the assistant commissioner, including the assistant commissioner, and then a variety of different organizations that provide direct support and referrals for our drivers.
And Commissioner, since the program's inception, how many owners have applied for the debt relief?
Through the program, there were over 4,000 drivers that have gone through the ODRC for a variety of different things, to see if they qualify for the program or for other assistance that we provide at the ODRC. But within the program itself, we provided assistance to 2,034 owners.
And in terms of those owners who have applied for assistance through these programs in 2024, how does it compare to previous years?
Well, so the program has sunsetted as of April 2024, but a majority of applicants came in around September of 2022. Then we provided continued support to assist different individuals who may have had their lender not participate initially, and then we assisted them through that process and then closed it in April of 2024. For some people who were still behind, we had a closing date of 12/31 of last year. And so we helped everyone who was able to get their lender onboard by that time. And that was the promise that I made to the industry.
And when the program was up and running, what were some of the common reasons for denial, if any?
The biggest one was that their lender did not want to participate. So we provided an incentive of $30,000 and a city-backed guarantee to support the industry and the loans, and we backed it. And so for many of this, for many of our medallion owners, they no longer had a personal guarantee on their mortgage, their assets, or other things, right? The city took that on. Unfortunately, some lenders were a little greedy. Like, they wanted more, and they did not want to participate in this program. They wanted to go after the assets of some of our owners.
How many taxi medallions were foreclosed on in 2024?
So, in the MRP-plus program, there was about 419 that are in default status, and about 20, excuse me, about 45 defaulted medallions have been sold. And so that is in the MRP-plus program.
You said 45?
45 in the MRP-plus program. 419 that are defaulted 90 days or more. And so that's just in the MRP-plus picture. And we always anticipated that people who participated in the MRP program would walk away from the medallions once the city took on that guarantee. In the overall market, I'll have Cheryl discuss medallion foreclosures.
Sure. Transfers that were based on foreclosure for fiscal year 2024, 300. If you go by calendar year 2024, it's 433. And this information is provided online, and the latest data will be reflected in our newest Office of Financial Stability report.
Thank you. Shift into the E-Hail program. The TLC is operating an E-Hail program for passengers to use TLC license apps to hail yellow and green taxis. TLC has previously testified positively about this program, and we'd like to have an update about its progress and the TLC's views towards its future.
So the E-Hail Flex Pair program has recently been made permanent. This provides a lot of flexibility for drivers to get more trips in addition to street hails. This has been an overwhelming supported program where individuals can not only get, again, street hails, but also more E-Hail trips. As a total, depending on the month, now E-Hail trips incorporate about 5% to 10% of all taxi trips. And so this is a good thing for the industry, for the industry to have more opportunity to make more income and to provide more flexibility for many of our individual drivers.
Have you done any further analysis on E-Hail's effect on driver revenue?
Yeah, so overall, right, with the meter rate increase and with overall more options for drivers, since the meter rate increased in 2022, fare box revenue for drivers have increased up to 40%.
To, from your vantage point, do you feel it's improving the situation for drivers?
I think it is.
And you don't feel it's putting pressure, putting downward pressure on the fares?
Again, this is more flexibility. It is a driver's choice. If they want to take E-Hail trips, that's up to them. They're not forced to take these trips. And at the end of the day, you know, this provides more flexibility and more trips overall. If there is a lot of, let's say, street hails, then many of the drivers would go that route and not take E-Hail. And so that's up to them. But we continually monitor the overall market to ensure that drivers are receiving a fair, a fair base minimum pay for both sectors.
And since it's optional, do you feel that those who do not participate are negatively affected at all, the drivers?
Again, it's a market-based decision for the drivers. If they see that there is a lot of street hails, right, then that might be a decision that they want to make for themselves. Some drivers, for example, only do airport trips because that makes the most economic sense for them. Some drivers only do CBD trips because it makes most economic sense. And some drivers, right, in other sectors, only do dispatches from an app.
When I ask questions on congestion price, and I do want to touch on what you just said in terms of the CBD piece, does the TLC have an intention to expand the program in the future, both in terms of its scope or in terms of bringing more drivers into this ecosystem?
I think, right now, we have an overall program that works, and we continue to monitor it. And I have not heard a lot of, I guess, complaints about the program in the last few months since the E-Hail program was passed.
So do you envision expanding the program?
It's, it is.
CBD?
Well, it is available for all yellow drivers at this point.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so it's, so, yeah.
But in terms of the scope of the program, do you intend to expand that at all?
We can look at other things, including minimum trip pay, driver pay on the E-Hail platforms, and things like that. But this is an official program of the TLC, and it continues to operate in its full capacity.
Moving to accessibility. In the past, TLC has emphasized that improving accessible and equitable service is a top priority for the commission. Currently, there are approximately 9,500 wheelchair-accessible vehicles, an 18% increase from the previous fiscal year. The mayor's management report notes that the growth is due to the expansion of the TLC's accessibility regulations for FHVs. How is the TLC ensuring that the yellow cab industry continually expands and increases the number of wheelchair-accessible taxis in its fleet?
Council member, accessibility is one of our prime priorities that we work through on a regular basis. We meet with our partners. We ensure that what we do reflects, really, the intent and, you know, with support of our advocacy communities. We work with them on our most recent regulations, and we continue to work with them moving forward. We are very proud that we're close to the 50% mandate of active taxis, and we likely will meet that in March of this year. Right now, the yellow fleet is at 44.8%, which roughly is about 4,235, a little bit more. And then, on the other side, the FHV industry, there are 7,571 wheelchair-accessible vehicles. And so, right now, the incentive on the FHV industry is that the only way to get a TLC-licensed vehicle is to get a wheelchair-accessible vehicle. And so we truly believe that the structures and the incentives that are in place are strong enough to help with the conversions. And we're looking at the TIF funds and then also altering some of those incentives to provide more upfront monies to help with conversions on the yellow fleet as well.
What kind of assistance does TLC provide to drivers who are converting to accessible vehicles?
In the current state, we provide $14,000 plus quarterly payments of $1,000 if they make a certain number of trips per quarter. In addition to that currently, and I say currently because a lot of these things are in consideration to be changed, drivers who drive a wheelchair-accessible vehicle also receive a $1 incentive per trip. And so, there's also, well, overall, those are the, those are the incentives in place to help drivers convert and take trips that are wheelchair-accessible.
Overall, we've seen a faster adoption of accessible vehicles in FHVs than yellow cabs. What is the cause of this disparity? What problems do yellow cab owners encounter when converting to the wheelchair-accessible vehicles?
Yeah, like I said in my testimony, council member, the yellow industry is only 50% recovered, right? Where the FHV industry by revenue is recovered completely and by trips, about 90% to 95%. And so there are some industry dynamics in the yellow sector that I continue to evaluate and look at. In addition, within our rules, we have also made sure that, on the FHV side, that the waves are also ADA compliant. Previously, that was not the case. And so we're continuing to make sure that And so we're continuing to make sure that there are more options out there and more consistency within the regulations so that there are more converters. Hopefully, with more converters, there is more competition in the marketplace to provide drivers, owners and fleets with a cheaper wheelchair accessible option.
What is the current citywide average weight for accessible dispatches for yellow cabs when compared to FHBs?
I don't know if I have that right in front. Actually, Evan does. Give us a second, we're going to look it up. Go ahead and put for that. So we're going to talk about the accessible dispatch program, which is the yellow program.
Yeah, we have it for accessible dispatch. I don't believe we have it for FHBs for accessible dispatch. It has decreased by over one minute from last year. It's down to 11 minutes and 17 seconds. We do not have it for FHBs.
And I can speak to FHBs though.
Standards we're coming up with.
So again, within the FHV sector, while I don't have those data points, we have regulations around that. Previously, we had regulations that 90% of trips are done within 15 minutes or less, 80% within 10 minutes or less. Recently, we changed the rules to ensure that we meet the demand for wheelchair accessible vehicles in a much faster timeframe, which is 90% within 10 minutes or less.
Thank you. And just quickly going to pivot to congestion pricing and then I'm going to yield for my colleagues to ask questions. Tolls imposed by congestion pricing will likely be passed down to consumers in the form of increased fares. Will this drive down passenger demand or have you noticed that it's driven down passenger demand for taxis and for higher vehicles negatively impacting the industry?
So actually, councilmember, we've seen for the the data, we don't have that much data yet. It's only been 30 days since the since we put in congestion pricing as a city. However, the early data shows us that actually taxi trips have increased by 10% in the month of January compared to January 2024. And FHV trips have remained relatively the same. And, you know, there is some fluctuations, but in the FHV industry, we see a 1% decline in overall trips. And I think this is, again, a natural growth of the industry and then also, you know, some relatively weird things in the data. And so we want to look at a longer period of time versus just one week of time. Generally, the city's DOT looks at this data and provides it and then also works with the MTA as they are the agency that is working directly on these.
And to clarify what you just said, you're saying that FHV trips remain the same, but there was a 1% decline?
Relatively the same, right? It was about 1%.
So it hasn't remained the same. They've seen a slight decline of 1%. But the.
But it just like.
Yellow caps have gone up.
Yeah, it could be many different fluctuations in that data. This is a week's time. And so week, week over week, year over year, the data can be a little bit unclear.
And with congestion pricing, considering these, this new surcharge, have you, has the increase, has there been a noticeable increase in the cost per trip?
So as you mentioned, right, we worked with the industry. We work with a variety of different stakeholders to ensure that it wasn't $9, right, per trip? Or even 15 at that point. And where we landed on for high volume FHV trips, it was going to be, well, now in this new iteration, $1.50 for high volume FHVs like Uber and Lyft. For community car bases, it's 75 cents. For black car bases, it's 75 cents. For yellow taxis, it's 75 cents.
But earlier in your response to another question, you said like, drivers make their independent decisions on what type of trips they want to take. And some may find that it is an incentive of going into the CBD. What would that incentive be for them?
So the incentive of going into the CBD, I think we know in the initial data that you can get more trips faster, you can move through the CBD. On average, before before congestion pricing for a long period, the speeds of this congestion relief zone was much slower. And so if you can move faster, if you can get passengers to your destination just a little bit quicker, it means that you get a little bit more free time now to search for that next fare instead of waiting in traffic.
The congestion pricing surcharge for yellow taxi, green cabs and black cars is 75 cents for each trip into, out of and within the congestion relief zone, while the surcharge is $1.50 per trip for Uber and Lyft. Just wanting to see, again, going back to that incentive, is it just really time-based that incentivizes them to go in there? Or do you find that in addition to these surcharges, is there like another layer, you know, to the the cost per trip?
It's also customer behavior. I think on the opposite side, if they're put, if they're leaving their private cars at home, potentially, they are going to look at other options, including FHVs and TLC vehicles in general.
Thank you.
Our sustainability and environment.
Accessible electric vehicles into the market. Have you considered conducting?
An additional 200 fast charging built by private entities, the Port Authority.
Accessible electric vehicle.
Accessible. You know, of an additional two or more green and more sustainable future.
Chair, one last question if I may. Thank you. And then what is TLC doing right now to study how to bring wheelchair accessible electric vehicles into the market? Have you considered conducting a Taxi of Tomorrow-like competition to promote the development of wheelchair accessible electric vehicles in the US market?
Yeah, we have engaged with a variety of different manufacturers with medallion owners to really look at what the future of wheelchair accessible electric vehicles are. Currently, when I speak with manufacturers, this is not something that really, there is a pressing mode for them to push towards, right? They tell me that there is not a market and I show them New York City, right? I show them that there's 100,000 vehicles, that there is truly a market. And they just don't believe me yet. But we are always working with our manufacturers to educate them about the biggest for hire fleet in the US so that we can make that transition. But as our rules continue to mature, we hope, right, with more EVs, with more wheelchair accessible vehicles, that there is a synergistic future for an EV wheelchair accessible vehicle.
Do you think including? Good morning. I'm always happy to see you. When we're talking about yellow cabs, especially in New York City and all taxi, we know that a lot of immigrant folks, that's how they raise their kids. I'm a beneficiary of that because my father drive, I'm a job taxi, yellow cab for many decades in New York City. And I'm sure it's not only me, it's many others that benefit. So now having, they're having a hardship. We know that for a fact, right? That for them to retire their vehicle, right, it's going to be very hard on them. They've been through a lot in this process, not your fault, like, I mean, actually. But with the March 31st, 2025 deadline, right, approaching, how close is the city is to, I mean, how close is the city to reaching the goal of having 50% of the active yellow taxi fleet wheelchair accessible? And what challenges remain in admitting this requirement?
Well, councilmember Narcisse, thank you so much for your commitment and your work for a better for higher industry. I really appreciate that. I think to your first point is that, you know, this was a, we want to provide relief for for drivers with their vehicle retirement extensions. But to meet the court mandated order, we can't do that any, we can't do VREs as as much as I want, right? To support our drivers and our yellow industry. And so, you know, we're getting closer. We're at 44.8% of the fleet for March of 2025. What is going to be more hard is the court mandated order for 2028. We are only about 30% of the way there for the entire authorized fleet. And so, you know, there is going to be a lot of work that I need to do with our industry to ensure that we have a pathway there. And that's why we're looking at a variety of different changes to the program so that more drivers can have more upfront prices, more upfront payments and their hackup costs so that they can actually afford these vehicles, wheelchair accessible vehicles that may cost upwards of 75,000. We've also worked hard to get more converters into this, into the yellow space. And we have recently added two more converters that meet drivers where they are, right? And what I mean by that is that, you know, typically fleets have advantages when they do big purchase orders. In this case, the converters will take on one vehicle, convert that vehicle instead of them having to go to other states like Indiana, that they can go somewhere closer like the suburbs of Philly.
Thank you. One of the things I was reading about, it's too early. We know that it's too early to have a data to see how congestion prices is affecting our fleets in New York City. But with the little that I know of from hearing from the drivers, they are very concerned. But hearing from you, you said there there is kind of a trends, I say, that may more likely probably improve, is better for them, but in the meanwhile, they're having concerns.
Yeah.
What are you doing? Are you telling them this is A B, I think it's better for you, but from the pocket, from their own pocket, they said that it's not good for them?
I think we have genuine concerns as well, right? When both the yellow industry and the FAV, FHV industry had paid billions into congestion charges before this one, $2.50, right, on the yellow side, plus another 50 cents, plus now another 75 cents. Those are big concerns. Those are added costs when you get into a yellow taxi. And so I have those concerns and I think that the bigger picture, right, is that we need to work with the state to say, hey, you can't continue to use the for hire vehicle industry as a piggy bank. You can't continue to say, okay, we'll charge $2.50, another 50 cents, and then another 75 cents. It has to stop somewhere. And the same with the FHV industry as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. I know it's time, it's just a little personal. Thank you.
We're going to have councilmember Banks followed by councilmember Ariola.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioner and to the rest of the staff members for your testimony. When it comes to medallion value and financial viability, with the value of taxi medallions having plummeted for for over, from over 1 million to a fraction of that, what measures are being taken to address the financial burden on medallion owners, many of whom are struggling with debt? And are there any plans for debt relief, for restructuring of the program to help subsidize this industry?
Yeah, thank you so much, councilmember Banks. This is something that is incredibly important to the TLC. And one of my, one of the first things that I told not only the chair, but also the entire council was that I would get MRP and MRP plus to the finish line. We got there in September of 2022. We held a Big Ten event where thousands of drivers, hundreds of drivers, now thousands of drivers, were able to come and get relief. Small medallion owners of six or less medallions, those who needed help the most. And we provided now over $471 million of debt relief. That that's a good thing for New Yorkers because where they were going to be was that their mortgages, their homes, their private cars were going to be taken away from them. But through this program and through the work with the council, we were able to say, okay, you know, you're a small medallion owner, you're struggling. Let's get you some help. Let's get your payments down to $1,234 per month instead of, in some cases, I heard $5,000, right? Because a lot of our drivers still have to pay rent, a mortgage, car payment or other, sorry.
No, 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 I said so true.
Yeah, and so we wanted to make sure that we can provide some relief and further that the bank couldn't go after them themselves, that they would come to the city instead.
All right, thank you. Madam Chair, just indulge me a couple of more minutes. Thank you. Competition for the higher vehicles, FHVs and the ride hailing apps. How does the Taxi Limousine Commission, the TLC, plan to level the playing field between yellow cabs and for hire vehicles? Example, the Uber, the Lyft, the Curb, Revwo apps. Given the significant regulatory and operational disparities, and are there plans to impose similar surcharges, regulations for the FHVs to support the yellow cab industry?
Yeah. Yeah, like as I look at the numbers, it concerns me that while the yellow industry has been recovering since the global pandemic, they were hit with a double whammy, like you said, right? With a medallion crisis in 2018, 2019, and then again with COVID-19. And so that's why we came up with the MRP plus program. But to your question more specifically, how do we level the playing field? In recent months, we passed a regulation around Flex Fare or the e-hail, where now trips don't just come from street hails. They now come from other areas, including an app from Curb and Arrow. So that for the first time, FHV, the taxi industry could now have that flexibility to compete on that same level playing field. But we also need to look at the overall picture. And I think that that there has been certain trends that have changed, that street hail culture is not what it used to be. And so we have to also recognize that. But, you know, from my numbers that I've shared today, I'm encouraged that people are seeing yellow as a prime opportunity to get them through and across our city.
I think my last question before we go to the second round, Madam Chair. So I can get these questions out? Excellent. Technology integration. What steps is the TLC taking to modernize the yellow cab industry and integrate it into the technology space? For example, are there plans to develop or support a unified app that allows passengers to hail yellow cabs as easy as they can book ride, ride hailing services?
Yeah. I'm very proud to say that our yellow system is probably the most technologically advanced yellow system in the country. Not only does it have a T-PAP technology system within the vehicle, but every single vehicle is connected to an app, not a unified app, but an app that works together. So Curb and Arrow work together. They're the most primary dominant apps in the industry. So when you get into a yellow taxi, you can either pay on your app, you can pair and pay, or you could do multiple things. In other jurisdictions, that just doesn't, is not available. And so, you know, we will continue to look at innovation in this space. We continue to work with the the technology providers, the e-hail providers, to see what the next steps are. But part of it is providing Curb, Arrow, e-hail, any other e-hail providers just a little bit of flexibility so that they can innovate.
Thank you. I'm going to allow councilmember Banks to ask his final question.
Thank you, Madam Chair. When we talk about long-term vision, what is the long-term vision for the yellow cab industry in New York City? And how does the TLC plan to ensure that yellow cabs remain a viable and iconic part of the city's transportation? part of the city's transportation ecosystem in the face of the ongoing challenges that they're facing?
Yeah. You know, one of, I think, the core values that I have for the entire industry is an industry that is, that serves, that is safe, that continues to provide people who need a for hire vehicle an opportunity to get where they need to go in a timely manner. But within that, there needs to be accessibility, affordability, and safety for all roadway users. And, you know, my biggest vision for the entire for hire industry is that everyone is looking for a pathway to the middle class, looking for opportunity for their families, for their kids to go on to college, for, to buy their first home, to, you know, do what they need to do to live the American dream. And, and that's what, you know, I, I really have as a core value for this industry.
Thank you. Congestion pricing. How is the TLC collaborating with city agencies such as Department of Transportation to address, address issues like congestive pricing, dedicated taxi lanes, and the other infrastructure improvements that, that could benefit the yellow cab industry?
Yeah, you know, I, I appreciate my partnership with Commissioner Rodriguez tremendously. He is someone who we remain in contact on a principal level on a regular basis. But we also have connections with the policy team, my policy team, and the DOT policy team to discuss the variety of different things. Things like taxi relief stands, right? Where do we need to put more taxi relief stands? This has been a close partnership that I incredibly appreciate. On the MTA side, we also work with the MTA, Jano's office, to really ensure the smooth implementation of the congestion pricing. And there have been small hiccups, right, of one or two drivers, but that, that is just an operational issue. Overall, the implementation has been, I, I would say, flawless.
All right, thank you. And my last question, when it comes to regulatory reforms, are there any plans to revise the regulatory framework governing the yellow cab industry to make it more competitive in the current transportation landscape? For example, could medallion requirements be adjusted to reduce costs for the owners?
Yeah. We're always working with our communities, including our advocacy community, to make sure that the yellow industry can continue their track to recovery, to stability, and to ensure its overall picture as the iconic yellow taxi of our city. Within the regulatory framework, we're always looking at, how do we put on more innovations within the yellow industry? Last year, we made the Flex Fare pilot permanent. We're looking within the technology system to ensure that we get more data on a regular basis so that we know where and when yellow taxis are operating so that we can simply get a lost item, right, simple like that, back to a passenger in a more efficient timeframe. Or making sure that, you know, that in the future, there might be a more need for a taxi at a high-volume event, be it at Madison Square Garden or, or one of our baseball stadiums, right? And to, to say, hey, you know, there is high demand in a certain area of our city. And so, you know, we have a sandbox that we're looking at a variety of different new ideas to ensure a more competitive for hire industry for all New Yorkers.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Two questions on Intro Number 373. One, are drivers experiencing hardships that prevent them from retiring their vehicles? And I'm curious to know what that trend has been like.
Yeah. For over three-year period of time, we looked at vehicle retirement extensions and approved over 90% of those extensions. And so, you know, it, it has come a time when, you know, we have to say, hey, you know, like, COVID is behind us, there are new rules and regulations in place, and a court order that is in place. But for some drivers, I have still provided VREs exceptions to. But that's just one. Those who own one medallion, excuse me, owners with one medallion or less can have a one-time, six-month extension. But I cannot do any more extensions. And why I can't do that is because if I provide an extension for a non-wheelchair accessible vehicle, that means, right, that it's going to delay a wheelchair accessible vehicle into the future. And so I can't do that. And on the other side, that wheelchair accessible vehicles no longer have a vehicle retirement age. And so as long as a wheelchair accessible vehicle passes inspection, it can continue to operate in, in New York City. But let me provide a little bit more data on that, and I'll turn it over to Cheryl.
Sure. Do you want me to break it down?
Sure.
The last few years. During 2020, 689 applications were processed, 574 were granted. 2021, 809 were granted. 2022, 1,091 were granted. 2023, 1301 were granted. 2024, 788 were granted. And, you know, since October, we changed the rule that it's only for an owner of one medallion for six months. So the numbers obviously decreased.
Thank you for that. And how many vehicles would be impacted by this proposed legislation?
So there are 13,585 medallions. 4,500 of them are wheelchair accessible vehicles. Those can be kept on for as long as they can pass TLC inspections. So if I did the math, it would be about 9,374. I hope I did the math correctly. That might be, that might can get a vehicle retirement extension.
Thank you. Thank you for your.
Hi. I'm Jean Ryan, President of Disabled in Action of Metropolitan New York, DIA for short. DIA has been trying to get taxi access since 1996, when we founded Taxis for All Campaign. That's 29 years. And we have heard every flimsy excuse in the book for why we do not have access when we're trying to hail a cab on the street, get picked up at the airport, or book a trip through an app or call. Years ago, we tried to get a law for 100% taxi access with the city council to no avail. It would not even go to committee, even though a large majority of council members endorsed it. We sued and got a legally binding agreement in federal court more than 10 years ago that by 2020, half the cabs would be wheelchair accessible. But it's 2025, and that goal has not been reached. Last year, Judge Daniels ordered the TLC to reach 50% accessibility again. And the TLC changed rules about length of ownership and mandatory buying of wheelchair accessible vehicles. We believe that Intro 373-2024 would again not allow the TLC to reach 50% in a timely manner as they legally agreed to and are under court order to reach. Our disabilities, coupled with the fact that cab drivers need business, led the TLC to form Accessible Dispatch in 2018 so we can call or use an app to book a yellow cab trip. If the vehicle doesn't show up, we can call back and get a human. Accessible Dispatch has been a lifesaver for us, even though sometimes we have to wait one or two hours for a vehicle to show up. And now the TLC wants to ditch it. Why? We are asking the council for more funding to keep Accessible Dispatch and to ask the TLC why they do not enforce their own rule that drivers must pick us up. It takes only four to five minutes to secure us if drivers have the correct straps and knowledge. But drivers refuse to pick us up, refuse to secure us, and do not speak English so that we can safely communicate with them. Thank you.
Thank you. And just for the record, we're adding Julia Yadez to this panel. Yapez, excuse me.
Thank you for waiting.
No problem.
Hi, good morning. My name is Eman Romawi-Doster, and I am the Senior Community Organizer with the Disability Justice Program at New York Lawyers for the Public Interest. Thank you, council members, for allowing me to speak this morning. On February 6th, the state legislature had a joint transportation budget hearing, which included testimony from the New York State Department of Transportation, the MTA, and various organizations from all over the state. Ron Epstein, President and CEO of the New York Material Construction Association, talked about the need for the protection of our environment and the role electric vehicles can play in doing that. And a few people mentioned accessibility for people with disabilities like myself. Yet no one married the two. We need to talk about accessible transportation in a holistic way that includes everyone. Intentional language, including people with disabilities, matter. Why hasn't the TLC taken broader action to develop an accessible electric vehicle like when they did with the Taxis for Tomorrow in 2009? Why is the TLC conducting studies on the costs, challenges, and opportunities related to the use of electric for hire vehicles without considering the need for accessibility? It's the responsibility of every government agency across New York State to ensure access for people with disabilities, including the TLC. New York Lawyers for the Public Interest strongly supports a council resolution in favor of a statewide surcharge on inaccessible Ubers and Lyft trips and the establishment of a green and accessible transportation authority to support accessibility and electrification in the for hire vehicle and paratrendy fleet. New York City is one of the largest markets in the world for multi-billion dollar rideshare corporation Uber or Lyft. Our local government should take a proactive leadership role in requiring this industry to develop and adapt vehicles that are both fully accessible and zero emission. As someone who uses for hire vehicles frequently through the MTA's accessory ride on-demand pilot program, and a person who uses manual wheelchairs for my residual limbs when they're sore or when my lupus is extra aggressive, which happens the more, more and more I get older, I can tell you that I am worried about wheelchair users being left out once again. Electric vehicles, cleaner air, and moving from fossil fuel combust, combustion are vital to disabled New Yorkers. I, along with other advocates, want to be involved with this planning as they directly affect our lives and how much or little we can participate in work, school, doctor's appointments, social events, and more. Let's make our city more accessible, not less. That's the equitable thing to do.
Thank you. Thank you. Robert?
Okay. My name is Robert Acevedo from Disabled in Action. As, as I testified at last month's virtual meeting, getting rid of Accessible Dispatch means getting rid of the human element, the human element, which is very important to many of the disabled and non-disabled, including many tourists. It's very important for, for the, the image of this city. I still think that this decision is about money. And the result of the TLC being forced in court to do what they said in a previous settlement. As usual, the disabled are being penalized while being told that by the TLC that they, that what they are doing is best for the disabled. Once again, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. As for an amendment requiring taxis and for hire vehicles to display a decal, warning passengers to look for cyclists and e-scooters when opening the door, this is essential. As many disabled and non-disabled are endangered by these unlicensed, unlicensed, unlicensed cyclists and e-scooters. When discussing this amendment, the visually impaired and deaf should be mentioned, as, should be mentioned, as they are impacted by these unlicensed cyclists and e-scooters which refuse to make a sound announcing their impending arrival. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Julia?
Thank you. I live in the Little Caribbean section of Brooklyn, an area which is almost impossible to find a taxi. Our area has drive-around gypsy cars who don't care about the wheelchairs and non-accessible dog vans. We can call Lyft or Uber, but many of these do not want to accept wheelchair passengers. And if they do, their demeanor is rude, abusive, and or say they can't speak English, creating more stress and frustration, which always endangers my well-being. When I call Accessible Dispatch, I get service by humans. I can ask human-related questions from and about New Yorkers with disabilities. Accessible Dispatch employs a New York-based disabled staff who also speaks and understands English. In short, Accessible Dispatch experiences and feels my needs. Seems that whenever people with disabilities find that doors slightly open that can make our day, job, or outing more fruitful and enjoyable, it starts to close once again before it completely opens. No one is above a disability-free future. Becoming disabled will always be an equal opportunity employer. The accessibilities we establish in our city today will be the ones you might use tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you.
Need to extend the program because my bank refused to put those in can. So we need to keep the 200,000 coverage. And also for a wave, Vega Accessible, the DSC should increase the funding for the TIF because the wave Vega costs like $80,000 right now. In 2008, it cost $30,000. The cost increased. So they had to increase the funding for the wave Vega for the medallion and from $14,000 to at least $30,000, you know? And also, also for the medallion MRP program, my loan is not restructured yet because my bank refused to participate in the CD program. And our union looking for the new bank to buy out the loan. So the CD asked the CD and DSC to extend the program because the DSC chair said earlier, they said they ended on December last year. So we, the DSC and the CD should keep the program until all the, the medallion loan restructure. You know, we have maybe about 200 loans left for medallion. Because most of the medallion owner, they are restructured already. But a few owner, they had the loan not restructured yet because the bank, they refused to participate in the MRP program. So I asked the CD and, and the DSC to continue the program until all the medallion loan restructure. So we are getting close to restructuring. So please continue the program. Thank you so much.